I'd like to call, to order the work session on April 13th, 2020. We are all present. We have one item on the agenda tonight. I'd like to remind council that staff will be pausing intermittently to answer my, any questions. This item is a staff presentation on a proposed cross-deck industrial facility. This project is north of Camelback Road and adjacent to Luke Air Force Base. We have our Development Service Director, Christopher Baker, and Engineering Director Rebecca Zuck presenting. You're on.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight to, I'm trying to see where my mouse is, I'm sorry, to have this conversation with you tonight about a project that it's actually located in Maricopa County and seek some policy direction from the council. Sorry for the delay. So, the, the property in the, in question is located, you can see right there, it says site, bounded within that red line. It is approximately one mile east of 303, which you can see on this map here on the, over here. Litchfield Road is one mile to the east, 303 is one mile to the west, excuse me, I misspoke. The entirety of the parcel is 157 acres and is proposed to be developed in two phases. A north phase, which is phase one, which is the subject of, the, the subject of tonight's conversation, and phase two, approximately another 80 acres roughly, that is to be determined in the future. There is no current schedule on the southern portion of the property or phase two. The property, as you can tell, is immediately south of and adjacent to Luke Air Force Base, and as such, it does have some constraints about the uses that are allowed there, much like we have in our Luke Air Force Base corridors as well. The applicant is in the process of seeking a plan of development approval through the county, which is very much akin to our special use permit process. So, there's a public hearing that will be taking place at the county later this month, and then the Board of Supervisors in early May, and we'll get to that schedule in just a couple of moments. So, just to kind of put this property again in context of what's around it, to the north, as I mentioned previously, is Luke Air Force Base and the city of Glendale. To the east is property that's located in the city of Goodyear, within Goodyear city limits. As a matter of fact, this property, right in here, the city of Goodyear owns currently. This property in the, in the yellow is owned and used by Liberty Utilities, that's where they're building their office complex here in the front currently, and then this is Palm Valley Phase Nine, all of which is located within the city of Goodyear corporate limits. South and east of the property is the city of Litchfield Park, and immediately south of the property, this is PV 303, the far northern, northeastern reaches of PV 303. This is Palm Valley Five, all in here where you can see the rooftops. It's approximately 500 feet from where the cursor is on this map, sorry, 500 feet from where the cursor is on this map, immediately south to the closest residential property line. It's about 990 feet from where the cursor is on this map, immediately south to the closest residential property line. This is PV 303, and it is owned a mix of industrial in this quadrant, and then this triangle parcel right here is also zoned as mixed-use commercial, like C2, our general C2 type uses. This does allow for industrial-type uses currently. So, this is an image of the plan of development, site plan that is currently in process with the county. The, it has earned the approval of, and the consistency approval from Luke Air Force Base. It is 187,658 square-foot cross-dock industrial facility that handles palletized cargo. So, it comes in on a pallet and goes out on a pallet. There's also ancillary structures that are proposed, such as a maintenance, fueling stations, scales, and similar type of relatively minor infrastructure. There are 683 employee parking spaces, which is located in this region in here, and then 1,480 operational parking spaces. So, there's trucks and vans and trailers, those type of operational vehicles. So, there's 1,480 of those. This map is turned, so Luke Air Force Base is right here. This is north. North is the opposite way on this map. You'll notice that the driveway comes out this, on the west property line, and then continues down to Camelback. And then this is phase two of the property here, which is not currently proposed to be developed. This is just 80 acres of phase one. Again, the project is located in Maricopa County, and they are requesting the land use approval, that plan of development approval. The county planning commission is scheduled to hear this case on April 23rd at 9:30 in the morning, and the Board of Supervisors likewise is scheduled to hear this meeting on May 6th at 9:30 in the morning. Due to the virus, these will be on, you'll be able to have, or citizens, or anybody will be able to have access to the meetings online or by telephone. And so, now I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca to talk about Camelback Road and some of the engineering-related issues.
Okay. Thank you very much, Christopher, for that explanation. It was a, a good backdrop into the engineering components of this project. So, again, I'd like to reiterate that this is a county project, so we will have little to no review of anything that's onsite. However, we will have the opportunity, and we are considered the sole reviewing and permitting agency for Camelback Road improvements. It is a little tricky, and I want to explain that, in that Camelback Road, the city has 33 feet of right-of-way on the north side of the center line. Then there's a 10-foot Glendale Strip, and then there's 22 feet north of that, that's county, that will be also dedicated as right-of-way. So, in total, that section is 65 feet of right-of-way that would be necessary for the development of this project. So, it is a three, a three-agency agreement that has to be entered into, and that will be part of this project. We're working on a similar agreement far to the west between Sadea and Azur Canyon at our western boundaries of the city. So, it's going to be a similar type of agreement, because we have this situation all along Camelback with Goodyear, Glendale, and the county. So, so now, let me jump into some of the specific requirements for this project, and honestly, for any project in the city of Goodyear. They're required to do their half-street improvements along their frontage. That would include any additional lanes that are needed, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and streetlights. That's normal and customary. Anybody would be required to do that, but that's just for their 1,320 feet of frontage. In addition, they would also be required to do water and sewer, and in this case, water and sewer is Liberty Utilities, and from what I could tell, those utilities are already stubbed out to this site. So, it could be limited infrastructure for, for those improvements. So, so the other portion that the city is able to review is a traffic study. And so, that would have the city look above and beyond what are those normal requirements, such as their half-street improvements. It could tell us where a deceleration lane is needed. It would have us look at where they're accessing the site, and if there's a curb cut, a future curb cut, because it's anticipated that Camelback would be three lanes, a median, and then three lanes. So, we have a lot of opportunity there to evaluate what's happening with the traffic when we review a traffic study. The, the, we have had an opportunity to review this study one time, and about 45 minutes ago, we received the second submittal. That submittal address, should address the comments that we provided at the first submittal, and then I was told by the developer that some additional changes were made as well. But I will tell you that I have not had a chance to review that, and I would be working with my staff, the traffic engineer, to review that, to see what other opportunities we would have to make a comment on. And I will give you some examples. Say, for instance, they have significant traffic that heads over to the 303, that impacts the one lane that is there, to where the level of surface, level of service would be insufficient. We would have the opportunity to request that they build out that section of Camelback. We also would have the opportunity to say that, when warranted, a particular signal. Example would be at the site, the 152nd Avenue that comes up from, from the Palm Valley Five neighborhood, that, that doesn't have a signal today, and maybe with the addition of traffic, as well as the traffic that travels along Camelback, a traffic signal could be warranted with this development. At this time, I am unable to provide you with a recommendation from the engineering department on this project with respect to the traffic requirements, and it's simply because I have not had the opportunity to review the second submittal. We would review it, and then if we had any additional comments, we would provide those, or would move into an approval for this project, but at this time, I just have not had the opportunity to do that. I'm unable to give you what I would recommend from an engineering perspective. In addition to the traffic study, we also have the opportunity to review a conditional letter of map revision. So, Christopher, can you go back to slides, I think the contact, that one? So, when Christopher showed you this slide, if you noticed the sort of dark blue color and the, and the reddish color, tho, that's floodplain. And at the southern extremes of the site, along the northern half of Camelback, you'll see that there's additional blue in that area. So, they do have a, pardon me, a sliver of floodplain that they'll need to address for this particular project, and so, because that will be in the city's right-of-way, we'll have the opportunity to review that clomer. We'll review, we've done one review, we've provided comments. Once they resubmit, again, we would go through the review and approval process, and then once we do that, it would go on to FEMA for their review and approval as well. So, that happens to be a two-step process. And then, another thing I wanted to add about is, that really deals with off-site flows coming to and around the site. They also will have onsite flows that, because of their development currently, it's a golf course, but as they develop, certainly, they will be paving a vast majority of that. But I, I am not concerned about the development in that, in that way, because the county themselves have requirements for retention, onsite retention, and control of their discharge from the site. So, they'll follow the rules just like we do in Goodyear, and that will eliminate the potential for someone downstream to be flooded because of this development. They have to retain item, their flow onsite. So, with that, I'll hand it back over to Christopher to wrap up our presentation.
Thank you. So, based on the unknown information and the, and the fact that we have not actually had the complete review of the updated traffic study, the clomer issue, as Rebecca pointed out, in addition to helping to create a cooperative IGA with Glendale, the city of Goodyear, and the county for the roadway matters, and this item is scheduled to go to the county planning commission on April 23rd, our staff recommendation to council is that we communicate to the county, we're requesting that the project be delayed until those particular matters are appropriately resolved. And with that, Mayor, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you for both presentations. Who would like to start off the conversation? Wally?
Well, Christopher, Rebecca, one of my concern, well, I actually have two concerns. One of my concerns is the students in Palm Valley Phase Nine crossing Camelback and going down to the wash to school. We had that issue before, and now, if this site is built with big trucks coming, could we, well, I don't know if we could have them build an overpass, pedestrian overpass, or not, but we need to take that into consideration, because those kids are going to cross that street, and if it is busy with a lot of trucks coming in and out, then we've got another safety issue that we need to be concerned with. And you did mention the possibility of a traffic light, and to me, I think that would be a given, if they're going to have trucks going in and out. And if you said you could, might require them to build Camelback all the way to 303, if they were going to use that route, would they not use that route off of 303 to come into there? And would, and it would make sense, if they did, there has to be a light there for them to be able to turn in.
Pardon me. Thank you, Councilmember Campbell, for your comments. I, I'm going to try to break them down one at a time. With respect to parcel nine, we have installed a traffic signal to help those children come across Camelback. And I understand your concern if we added additional traffic, but ultimately, the pedestrian crossing at that signal should, is sufficient regardless of the traffic at that, at that, adding to Camelback. In addition, based on conversation that we had with the, the applicant this morning, they're anticipating for at least phase one, 90% of their trucks to go west to the 303. So, that gets to your second comment, which is, yeah, they'll come from the site to the, to, to 303, but also from 303 to the site. And so, that's where they anticipate the vast majority of their traffic at that phase one.
If we had this in front of us, where we had a golf being converted to this type of facility with houses around it, would be, would we be in favor of that, or would staff be in favor of that?
So, thank you for the question, Mayor, Councilmember Pozzillo. From a land use perspective, it, that use makes, that type of use makes sense in that location, given the, the restraints on the property from Luke Air Force Base. The noise contours, there cannot be residential there, and there cannot be retail taking place there. So, much like PV 303 to the south and west of that property, where there's limitations on the, on the use of the property, it does make sense from a land use perspective. Now, that being said, there are the engineering issues that have to be resolved in terms of traffic, drainage, streetlights, and those, those associated impacts as well.
My, my only concern is, would it be a 24-hour operation?
I'm sorry, are you asking, is it a 24-hour operation?
Is it a 24-hour operation? Yeah, I, I feel for the, and I know, you know, when you buy property, you know, you're, you got to be careful what's around you, but there's been a golf course around there for years, okay, and you have neighbors and households that have been around there, that probably expected a golf course, you know, to be converted into some type of truck depot. And at the same time, you know, if that's 24 hours, that traffic, I don't care which direction they're coming in, I'm sure it's going to make some noise where those trucks coming in. So, that's why I asked the question, if it was us, will we be pushing, and I understand the engineering issues, I, I just feel for those residents that are there already, that had the golf course and that breakage, and now you're going to put some type of a truck depot there. So, that's why I'm not excited about this project.
Mayor, Councilman Pozzillo, if I can have just a follow-up to that. From the, from the hours of operation perspective, that can fall within the county's purview, but again, let's say the county does choose to restrict it, or the applicant and county agree to restrict it for 12 hours a day. They could come back and ask for that. So, it's nothing that the city has any influence, or direct influence on, I should say.
No, no, I understand that, but from a city perspective, we could, even though we don't have any say in it, I would think we could make a recommendation one way there, whether we were in favor of that particular proposal or not in favor of that proposal. And I've got some heartburn on that proposal as it sits right now, so I just want to get that on the record.
Sherry?
I, I'm a little confused on exactly what is, it's a truck, what are they doing with the product there? Are they changing the status of it and shipping it out, or what's going on there?
So, we had a pretty high-level conversation this morning with the applicant. It is a, they're dealing with palletized cargo that comes in off the 303, and then, as Rebecca pointed out, 90% of their traffic goes back to the 303. This is a hub-and-spoke type of operation. It's not a distribution facility like we've seen in other locations of Goodyear. It has to do, and it's not customer-based like, like an Amazon delivery or any things of that nature. So, they're not breaking the, breaking it apart, parceling it out, and then taking it out into the community for delivery. It's more of a transitory stop, maybe from the west going east, or from the east coming west to California, where they're, they're changing the trucks, and it's palletized cargo. That's my understanding.
And if I could just add a little bit, I, I tried to do a little research on cross-dock facilities, and it is intended to not have materials stored for ver, in a long length of time. 24 hours is usually the maximum, but it could be just a few hours. And what I heard, I understood this morning, is the types of pallets might be things that we see at a Costco or a Home Depot. So, I imagined that they, say they bring an entire truckload of, of water, they may-
Or the paper.
I was actually going to say that, but then I thought, no. And so, they take the pallets off, so it's a long linear building, they take the pallets off, and they may then disperse that water to four different trucks that are, they're going to go back to the 303 and take it to a particular, maybe, other area. But it's, it's a way for them to take large groupings of pallets and break them apart into smaller groupings to go on a different type of truck.
Okay, I get that. And what, has Litchfield Park stated anything on this so far?
So, Mayor, Councilperson Loretto, the city of Litchfield Park has gone on the record, their city manager wrote a letter to the county opposing the request, opposing the project on basis of quality of life improve, quality of life impacts, and also traffic impacts.
Yeah, so I just want to also talk about this project as well. So, so I know, have we ever had, do we, I don't think we do it very often, have we ever talked, told the county that we want certain, that don't please don't have a project here, there, other places in the past? Have we done that as a city? Is that our, we normally do, or is that just very rare? It seems like it's very rare that we ever tell the county to not to build or to build things.
Mayor, Councilperson Hampton, it's very rare. As a matter of fact, I've been here for five years. This is the first time we've had interactions such as this with the county. And I think it's been very exceedingly rare, let me put it like that.
Okay. And then, I know we don't have any control of what goes there at the end of the day here. We can, we can control how they're going to set up the streets and the drainage and things like that to our liking, because we own most of Camelback. So, we can control that. And do we know, phase one, do we know, is phase two more of the same, or do they not even know what that is yet?
The information I've been able to discern from the county and also based on our conversations with the developer this morning, I think it's to be determined. There could be a, it could be an extension of this, however, it may be something else.
Okay. Yeah, something like, I don't know about this, but something industrial seems like it makes sense, if they're going to get rid of the, I don't, I don't think anybody wants the golf course to go away, especially if you're a resident. It's probably nice to have the golf course there, and less noise and things like that. But I imagine if it wasn't there to begin with, something up against Luke Air Force Base seems to make sense industrial-wise for that use, because you can't even put anything else there. Yeah, and was it always zoned for its, I mean, it's a, is golf course isn't zoned, is, is a golf course zoned industrial, or do they rezone, is that part of this process that they're doing now, is trying to rezone it to industrial?
So, Mayor, Councilperson Hampton, I've tried to discern some of the county processes. I believe what I've been able to learn thus far is such that what they're asking is this plan of development. And so, it is very much akin to our special use permit process. So, they have an airport overlay district, the county does, which has some limitations on use, much like we have throughout PV 303, and that if you want to do something within this area, you have to do this plan of development process. And so, that's how I currently understand it, and that's why it's akin to the special, to the city's special use permit process.
So, if I bought, if I bought a house in Palm Valley, either the Palm Valleys, and I was- So if I bought, if I bought a house in Palm Valley, either the Palm Valleys, and I was doing my homework, would I have known that, that this could have been something other than a golf course at the time that I bought my house?
That's, so you could actually go in and contact the county, much like residents contact us, and look at what's allowable there currently by the land use entitlements from the county. But that, obviously, we all know, doesn't prohibit somebody from asking for a change.
Yeah.
So, to a certain extent, you can educate yourself if you're an interested property owner. But this plan of development may not be something that was contemplated.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious. I put myself in the, in the shoes of a Palm Valley resident, if I would have thought that would ever, would it came or not, but...
Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, most of the time when we receive inquiries from citizens seeking to educate themselves, it's about what's directly behind my wall, or what directly could be there.
Yeah.
Not so much 500 feet away or 1,000 feet away.
And just to clarify too, that, that triangle shaped behind Palm Valley Phase Five is zoned industrial currently, correct?
So Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, this property, this triangle piece, is mixed-use commercial. So it's like C2, right here. It is located within Palm Valley 303. And then everything this way is already zoned industrial.
Yeah, because I thought we already rezoned, or was already zoned that way, because we were already looking at that already.
PV 303 zoned industrial. Now, I will share with you, if you remember from previous conversations that we've had, is that this is Charles Boulevard, and there are particular use restrictions within 300 feet of Charles Boulevard to mitigate the impact to the existing residents. So within, within that distance, you could have things such as office, more C2-based. And it also limits the height of the building to be more compatible. But certainly up by Camelback Road, along here, can be large-scale industrial warehouse distribution projects, much like you see in the other locations of PV 303.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that, I mean, whatever, anything other than a golf course will probably affect quality of life to some extent for anybody living in that general area. So, but I do agree, I, I do think we should, to your recommendation, delay to make sure at least we're, we're good before we move forward, so.
Yes, and Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, if council does choose to give us that direction and we communicate that to the, we're requesting the county to do it, obviously, it's up to them to accept the request or not.
Yeah, yeah, we can say whatever we want, but they might not accept it, so. Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Thanks, thank you both for the, for the information. I think to, I want to start off with talking about Councilmember Hampton's comment about the rarity of the opposition, et cetera. Directly west of that site is the Arizona Motorsports, where we took no position on that as a city a number of years ago. And I used the exact same words that Wally did a couple of weeks ago. And we paid hell for it going forward, because we chose not to take a position. So, and I think when we look at the number of times when our city actually interacts with the county on a property, those are very rare as well. There's not a lot of activity where we're budding up to where the county is. It's usually another city or something else. So I don't think we should be dissuaded by the frequency of this, because this issue is really, it's very important to the Palm Valley Five residents. It's very important to, I would say, anybody who lives west of there. Because as we all know, when you travel Camelback, that road is treacherous in and of itself, and it is a major regional thoroughfare. Counties using it, Buckeyes using it, we're using it. Even Glendale, I would argue that there's residents that are coming down and around Litchfield Park, certainly. And that that road is in the condition that it's in because there is, there's too many players. So there's too many cooks in the kitchen, so no one knows what the recipe is. And, and this is our opportunity to say to everybody, hey, we've got to fix this. Regardless of whether it's this development, or another development, or whatever, Camelback Road needs to be addressed going forward. And whether it, we're all focusing on the western, west of this property down Camelback to the 303, because we quote-unquote presume that that's where the majority of the traffic is going to go. There's still that section going eastbound, where Camelback goes from four lanes or five lanes, however you guys define it by engineering standards, down to two lanes, back to four lanes. And we've got a, we, we have that regional issue to, to address as well. So I think from a traffic perspective, we've got, we've got a major issue there. And I think we would be having this exact same conversation if we were talking about the property south. If somebody want, if someone said, we've got this great thing, we want to put it south of there, we've got this, we would be having this, what are we going to do about traffic on Camelback discussion? So this is a great opportunity for us to take kind of advantage of that. While I tend to always agree with the mayor on the you should know what you're buying when you buy it, I don't know that anybody would have anticipated that golf course budding up to Luke to be transformed into an industrial park. You know, I bought in that area, and, and I've lived here for, you know, almost 20 years, and I don't know that I would have envisioned that turning into a, to an industrial park. The property west of it, and continuing west of it, that's all vacant right now, I think we could have assumed that to have turned into anything. But ultimately, I think we owe our residents the ability to take a stand on, on this situation. I appreciate the staff position of we should ask for a delay. But if the county says no, what will our stance have been? Our official stance on record would have been neutral. And if the county decides to say no, and I, I don't think that we as a council should take that stance. I think we should, if they're not willing to delay it for us to get this other information, I think we're going to need to, we should take a more proactive position, along with the City of Litchfield Park, in recommending that, that, that they deny it. But if they go forward, here's a whole list of things that we're going to need to do to, to address that. Because we've got to protect our residents who live in that area, both directly south of there and west of there. We have a very large development in Sudea, and a number of commercial projects that are going to be impacted by this if we don't, if we don't take a stand. And I think we owe it to our residents to do that.
Laura?
Well, like everybody else, I'm completely empathetic to the residents of the area. It, it's a, a big, huge transition. And it, it seems like it's probably going to be the first of many discussions, because I'm just curious about all the land north and south of Camelback between that area and the 303. Is there a master plan for that? Is, has that all been zoned out? Are we going to expect to see more industrial, starting with that?
Mayor, Councilmember Cano, on the south side of Camelback, all the way to 303, I'm going to change maps here. On the south side of Camelback, from this location, all the way over to here, is lo, is within the Palm Valley 303, industrial pro, property project, PAD. So with the exception of that area by Charles, that I mentioned earlier, that can develop industrial, just like you've seen the other projects throughout PV 303. Now, that being said, there is a prohibition because of the accident protection zones coming off the end of the runway. And so there is like a, a no-build area right in here, that nothing would be built, and then also right in here. So there is a no-build area. But the rest of this property, along, along in here, along in there, could all certainly be, could be industrial in the future, because of the noise contours and the, and the fact that, you know, no, no congregations of people is what Luke Air Force Base looks at. Retail, churches, schools, things of that nature, housing, things of that nature.
Okay. So there will be more, lots of more discussions on, on this very topic, which really does bring up the road. It's mostly one lane. There's already a lot of traffic on it right now, a lot of trucks on it, a lot of weight on the road. You know, it's increasing with, with the things that are, are being proposed. So you've got a multi-genre, jurisdictional thing, so I'm sure that's definitely full of challenges. Couple other thoughts. One is 152nd is just going to be, that's going to be right at the front door. They'll come out onto Camelback and the places across the street. Is there anything in their proposal about street front, what it's going to look like in terms of what you will see when you're coming out of that neighborhood?
Thank you, Councilmember Cano. From what we understand, the access to the back parcel, so the Phase One piece that we're talking about today, is actually along the western edge of the, the parcel. So the 152nd might be the access point, primary access point for the undetermined industrial park area. But for right now, this particular development we're talking about tonight is actually trying to focus all of their traffic to come out that further westernmost. And to be honest, they said they did that to specifically try to create a separation from the residents to the south.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may add on to that just a little bit? In terms of the Camelback improvements along their half, or their half-street in front, is their customary normal, that would be to landscape and so forth, and sidewalks and curb and gutter. So the right-of-way would be completed. But beyond that, it would, we don't know exactly what that proposed use, nor know, would we know what it would look like until something moves forward.
Okay. Now, you mentioned, Rebecca, that they would have to keep all their water on their own property because of the floodplain and such. But what, would, is there any potential impact to the Bullard Wash?
Thank you for that question, and I've had that question already as well. They, they have to deal with sort of the pre-versus-post. So essentially, what, what runs off their site now, they can't increase it beyond that. So they would not have an increase to the Bullard Wash. But that doesn't mean, and, and I've said this before, it doesn't mean that next year we aren't going to see an increase because of the farming operations. But they are, will be required to retain what they do today on the site and not discharge it outside of their property.
Okay. And lastly, would we have to establish truck routes along Camelback to accommodate all this traffic? I mean, what if they want to go to 101? I mean, it just seems like it's a lot of trucks.
Camelback is already one of our designated future truck routes. And so they would be required, if they are going anywhere but to a delivery to someone's restaurant, house, grocer, they need to go to the 303 and then, and continue on from there.
Okay. I would agree with Vice Mayor's proposal that we make a statement on record. And then we've got tons of things that we need to consider in terms of the road and the wash and, and all, all those other things. But it's, it's just unfortunate to see this change, potential change.
Bill, you had another question?
I did follow-up on Councilmember Cano's question about traffic. So while I understand the psychological effect of wanting to move that to the west, so there's not this, you know, implication, the challenge that that creates for us from a traffic perspective is we're going to have a lot of theoretical truck traffic in and out of there, making lefts, making rights, if, if everything goes there. But there will be some that are going to go east. And that whole area isn't really designed for that, and we're going to increase the traffic. From a, from an engineering perspective, doesn't it, I mean, I'm pretty simple. Doesn't it make sense that we connect those two together and put a traffic light there to allow access in and out of that? But I realize that's in the traffic study that you haven't seen yet.
So in my conversation with the developer, that would, the east, I'm sorry, the westernmost access point would be right-in, right-out only, and left-in. You couldn't make a left-out?
Right, but even the left-in is going to create, because they're, you know, traffic delay, et cetera, so it... And I'm the, not anti, I shouldn't say that, but I'm really, I'm not a fan of all of the traffic lights that we're putting in, so many, so close to one another, that we're going to create a situation where we're going to have an entrance that's not too far from where a light should be or could be. And I just, I think this is just one more danger. And I get, like, this is the perfect reason why we say, hey, delay it, let's figure this out. But again, I'm just, if they say no, and they have the full power to say no, then what has our position been? And I think that's getting back to what I said earlier, so. Thanks for the, the answer.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I would just like to clarify that during our first review of the traffic study, they only had two access points, neither one of which was 152nd. They had one at the western extremes and then at the eastern extremes. And so our comment was, please have your access point at 152nd. And so when I very quickly glanced at the study that came in a short while ago, I did notice that they added the 152nd access point, but it still looked like the majority of their traffic were going out that western entrance. But again, have not had an opportunity to review the number of vehicles entering it or exiting the site at those three access points.
And we have really no way of, other than a sign that says no, no left, no, they will allow a left-in. We have no, other than a sign of saying you can't turn left out of there.
So the future Camelback, which is what we're all talking about, has a median. And so we will be able to control the access.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I'm the last one. So I know the unions are very strong, and the trucking industry is very strong. So I can see the power behind this. And there's nothing wrong with being in a union. I don't mean to say it in a negative way. But the number of complaints we've had from Litchfield to the Camelback area by residents, and then the school, I don't understand this, so I'm not a good navigator. So they don't like to use I-10 and travel down 303. So it's important that they go through a neighborhood where a school is and crossing? It doesn't seem right. It really does not seem right. And I do think we have to be more observant in this, and, and I don't think we have, because our city has grown so rapidly, that some of these decisions were made so long ago that I think we don't even have in the back of our minds to say anything. But to put a neighborhood and children in harm's way, someone must, must have a red face on this one. Someone must say, ha-ha, my mother would really get him at me if they knew this. It's not right. And we need, I'm going to protest it, no matter what that you vote on. But my conversation with the county is going to be, no. So truckers, go on I-10, go down 303, and go into your business. Stay out of the neighborhoods. I know they're on times, but that's their problem. I know they make money by the speed in which they arrive at their destination. Sorry. We all have, we all have things like that in our life with our job that seems not quite right. But we have to find another way, right? Another direction. So that's my position. Any other conversation? Any questions from us?
So Mayor, if I may sum up, it seems as though the consensus policy direction is for the city to take a stand that says, we recommend that the county deny the application. But if you should choose to approve it, we need to do, get the traffic study solution, the IGA worked out, any cost recovery type of issues, traffic signaling matters, things of that nature. Is that a fair statement?
No, we need to oppose it.
That's what I said.
I don't want them to think that we're changing our mind.
No, ma'am. It would be that the council is recommending to the county to deny this application. However, if they approve it, we need to be and participate in these other items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So let me just finish this, and so where are we here? So...
So, yes?
If, if I may, just...
You may.
I would just like to thank you for having this work session tonight. I know it wasn't originally planned this way, and I think of getting you the information, and you having the, the ability to call for this, you know, and, and your excitement to defend the neighborhood, I think should not go unnoticed, and just wanted to appreciate that, thank you.
Oh, that's very kind of you. I don't always do that, and I know you use my favorite, my favorite expression, did you not check before you bought the home site? But in this case, it's an easy way out for the company and the truckers. And I don't wanna give them any easy way out. Okay? So we'll review any information from the council at the next regular meeting, and I know the city clerk wanted to say something before I adjourn this?
No.
At the beginning in this, no. May I ask, do we start it right away, or do we wait till six? Right away, all right. No, no further business to discuss, this meeting is adjourned. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on...